Gougham Dold, thank you for coming. Number one on the agenda, apologies. Do we have any here?
Yes, we got Head of Finance, President of Property, Lisa Mellon and Kate Howard from Audit Wheel.
Okay, thank you. Any declarations of interest please that are not already declared? Okay, thank you. Share persons announcements. Can I thank everybody for reconvening a week later? This meeting was meant to take place last Friday, but for various reasons we had it postponed. And so I'm very grateful that people are able to be here today. Point four matters to be raised for the subcommittees. We have noted. So let's go straight into point five minutes from previous committees. So starting with the board of commissioners on page five. She'll take each page in turn and if there are any matters arising, these are any moments or units of accuracy. I'd be most grateful from the book say as we went through. So page five. Page six. Page seven. Page eight. Page nine. Page 10. Page 11. Page 12. Page 13. And finally, page 14. And we've, let's move on to the people committee. Starting on page 15, please. Matters arising or points of accuracy on 15. On 16. Page 17. And finally, page 18. Okay, thank you. Strategic change transformational culture on page 19. Page 20. 21. 22. 23. 24. And 25. Nothing? Yeah, well, thank you. And page 27, finance and audit. Starting page 27. 28. 29. 30. 31. 32. And finally, 33. Thank you very much. So now moving on to update on outstanding actions. That's page 35. I'll be moved to page sideways. So, okay. So the current status is ongoing for the new in station construction work. Kirsty?
Yes, see, I mean, forgive me for being pecky, but just for accuracy. So the action was for information around the construction of the new in project to be given to commissioners. That did happen. So although the new in project is ongoing, the action is completed because what actually was asked has happened. So I think we can, although the project is ongoing, I think we can say that that is closed.
Yeah.
Because the information was supplied to commissioners.
Yeah, no, that's a very, very, yeah, it's a very good spot there. Thank you very much. So the MTF, that's again ongoing. It's on the forward program. Lisa and I have a meeting in the diary, I believe, Mia, don't we?
There is a meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, so again, ongoing. Let's go on to page 36. So mission plan. Lisa or Kirsty?
So this is ongoing because although it's scheduled for September 2025, it doesn't actually happen. So we can't close it until it actually has happened. So that one, actually, the action is ongoing. It's the other way around. So that needs to be ongoing until the agenda item is included and discussed at the board of commissioners. My first thing to talk to them.
Yeah.
It makes sense.
Yes, it does complete sense. Right. Yeah, thank you.
For these.
No, no, you, no, 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 it's absolutely, it's absolutely needed that we are, we have total accuracy on this. Okay, so governance frame work. Dominic, have you got anything upon that? That is closed, is it?
Yes, lady will constantly be closed. So that was one of the moments to the review, to support the paper. We have put that in place and reviewed.
Yep, excellent.
Chair, it's taken to the Street Transformation Board and just for clarity, Brian, the last elements have signed off there as well.
Okay, excellent. Strategic performance indicators. That is ongoing because we're dealing with the outcomes of the HMI report. And Kirsty?
Yes, it would be just really useful to kind of understand how we will decide whether that's been closed or not. So it might have happened, it might not have happened. So I think, you know, at the moment, I don't, I don't, I don't know. Is there kind of like, I guess, Dean, I guess this was to you. You know, have we got to a point yet where that's complete or?
I suggest to keep it there open if possible, only because myself, Matt and Wayne, we have met and discussed this. It's just how we furnish the elements of the HMI into the service performance indicators. Because the indicators are statutory APIs which we were consistent and happy with. However, I think the HMI was, but we replicate in some, some mirror images. So we're just making sure that we don't give you information twice. So I would suggest maybe if you keep it open, we are due to present the next, the next board commissioners with these quarters, performance indicators. So I think we'll be able to close it there and make sure that it's finished.
Can I suggest then that we say that this is to be brought to the next board commissioners and put the date in? And then when that happens, we'll be able to formally take that one off.
Yeah, yeah, the date is important that we, you know, because it is a particular, you know, heading of ours that we want things done by certain dates and then close off rather than ongoing, ongoing.
Sorry, Chair. And Dean, I suppose the challenge here is that we might all have a big view on performance information. Performance indicators are the right thing for us. So we think one department, service as or as commissioners might be slightly different. So it doesn't need to be a discussion before that to kind of identify actually this is what we're looking for. So services look, department is looking for, because they might not be the same.
Yeah, that is fair. That's a fair observation, Carl. I think what we, what we had discussed was probably putting some of it again. And maybe to share with you before, obviously way before the board commissioners. So you're happy with the content.
Page? Just, yeah, just on that, I think there's, I'm just, I'll answer them. There's two parts. There's information we've got which can support performance indicator and there's a performance indicator we might like, which we haven't got the systems on the deck that provide it. So I think we have to have both. And then we can make decisions and choices about what are the requirements going forward.
So can I suggest that the action would be to have a more informal kind of session where those ideas could be explored and fleshed out. So that can inform that work other than bring a paper to the board and then say, and then find when the time gets to board. It's not meeting anybody's needs. So maybe if we had an informal session to shape that work so that people have got some guidance really rather than, you know, working for something and then only find that it's.
It needs a stepped approach.
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you. Okay, water rescue, flooding.
Yeah.
I mean, Kristy, you're very keen to jump in there. But it's done, yes. Because I interrupted the meeting, I remember it. There we are. And finally, capital funding. Yep, we are, we are, this is scheduled Friday the 4th of July. Not only is it American independence day, it's the day I pass my driving test. There we are. Okay, right, so.
I think very good sometimes to kind of criticize what we're doing, but can we scratch out both service and support that's been given to kind of move that agenda on? Because I do think that's a massive step.
Absolutely true.
This service, but more globally around Wales, around recognizing one of the most significant challenges that we've got and it is growing. So the fact that it's progressing with Welsh government officials, that it will be a monitored stage, I think is really, really important to celebrate.
Yes.
Actually, probably to add on to that, I've had a conversation with Midwest and North Wales to become aware of it, that we've asked for that request.
Yeah. Good. No, no, and Carl is absolutely right. You know, we, we, well, we see success or we see some progress. We absolutely need to identify it. So I mean, well done all involved in that. Okay. Right. Thank you very much, everyone. Let's move on to item seven, reports for decision. And seven one is the social partnership duty reporting on page 41. And I believe Alison, that's over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. So the report asks commissioners to review the social partnership duty annual report 2024/25 and approve it. I plan to introduce it and I'll hand over, I'll give colleagues the opportunity of adding to because this is a collaboration in terms of contribution towards the partnership duty report. So some key points that we need to be mindful of in drafting the report. Social Partnership and Public Procurement Act Wales 2023 faces the social partnership on a stamp to put in. It came into force on the 1st of April 2024. And in carrying out sustainable development, public bodies are required to seek consensus or compromise with their recognized trade unions. The act states that we should be consulting them at a formative stage of any processes, involving them throughout the process, providing sufficient information to enable them to properly consider what is being proposed and provide sufficient time to enable them to adequately consider what is being proposed and to respond. So the act sets out a number of specific requirements and these are intended to ensure that trade unions or other representatives of staff of public bodies are fully and properly involved when a public body sets its objectives or when making strategic decisions. In terms of the Wales perspective, Welsh government have been very clear on the ask here. So they, they are saying that partnership and collaboration are distinctive characteristics of how we work in Wales. The Welsh government encourages social partnership as a way of finding the best solutions to the challenges that we face in Wales. It's about finding new ways of working and starting with the aim of building consensus and compromise and encouraging worker participation. And it's a way of getting really to a position of mutual gain on both parties. And this, this, I think, position differs from a previous approach whereby, you know, talking across the table, what was the way to do things. This is about seeking compromise and achieving a shared agreement and vision going forward. And Wales have also said that there will be occasions where common ground can't be met. In that case, it's about a mutually acceptable way forward on both parties. So in pulling together this report, there are a couple of things that we're being asked to do, which is to share the report with our representation bodies. So that's the trade union. So the report has been shared, the Fire Brigade Union and GMV Unite and Unison. And we have received comments from the Fire Brigade Union and they are in the report at appendix one. This is the first time that public bodies have been asked to do such a report. And it will need to be shared with Welsh government and obviously placed on our website. So I think there's probably some learning going forward in terms of content and how we shape this and the relationships with our representative bodies going forward. And I think that's as much as I wanted to say in terms of introduction. I'll just turn to my colleagues just to see if they want to add anything because a lot of content has been drawn from the various projects and work streams that colleagues are working on.
Yeah, I don't mind jumping in, Chair, if that's okay. You're just, what we're asking, say, really, you know, I have a participation, a part to play in terms of the social partnership within the service and we engage with the represented bodies. And as Alison has already identified, it's the first time we've put this type of report together for Welsh government. So from a template perspective, I think probably what Welsh government are likely to do, just interpretation, is probably collect all public services reports and then probably put out something of a template for future use that might be of better management than the one that we put together here. But I guess that's where the feedback will come from Welsh government in terms of what we would like to use from us and the information that we supply. Lots of the information is obviously, we've compiled it as a management team from our own perspective. And then obviously reading comments from our colleagues within the S P as well, which are slightly disappointing from a personal perspective. However, I feel that the information we've supplied is in good nature and everything that we've put in there is a true and accurate record of how we implement things within the service from my perspective.
If I'm the main chair.
Yes, Chief, yes.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, from a personal perspective, as the chief of the organization, I really extend the idea that I want to engage as much as I possibly can, as early as I can with the, with the representative bodies and certainly have an open door as well for them to come to speak to me if they feel that other levels in the organization, they're not getting as much traction as they need. So I was a little bit disappointed with one of the statements that was in there. But suffice to say, my, my focus is to make sure that we are working genuinely in, in social partnership. That's my intent.
Thanks for the comments. I'll, I'll kick off with mine. I mean, clearly, you know, this has been a directive of the current Welsh government and public bodies need to step up and act accordingly to these new directives. So I'm very pleased that we are doing this and we seem to be on target. And Dean, I'm sure that once this information is created, there will be further guidance from Welsh government in terms of perhaps a template or whatever. Because they will then shape what they want. In terms of my reaction to it, I, I'm personally, I'm absolutely fine with everything. My concerns obviously towards the end of the document, the comments from the trade unions, you know, I, that, that did raise some concerns with me that perhaps, you know, we really need to do better. But, but a further concern is, you know, this is not just about the FBU. There are other unions involved here, you know, where the comments from Unison, where the comments from the other five fire unions. You know, I would expect those to be included as well. And, and I just wonder, did you just know how the submissions, Alison?
Yeah, we didn't. We sent, sent it out to all unions and FBU were the only ones that came.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's, I think that's that's kind of an action point somewhere. You know, that, that needs to be picked up, you know, picked up by us and also picked up by Welsh government. You know, we asked them and they didn't respond. And that's, that's somewhat unfortunate because it's an opportunity for them to, with their viewpoint. And anyone else? No? Okay. Well, we are here to notice and review and approve. Yes? Okay, so we do need note and approving. Thank you very much. Thank you, Alison, for collating that. But let's move on to seven point two then. Audit Wales knows charge with governance. So that's Wayne. But it gave me the opportunity to welcome Julie Owens from Audit Wales to our meeting this afternoon. Wayne, do you want to speak firstly and then we can call Julie in? Or Julie, would you like to give some opening remarks?
Yeah, I think this, this isn't really our, our report. We don't normally present this. This is just a letter that we, we send out each year to inform our audit process really and take our responsibility. So we're really here more for the audit plan, to be honest, but happy to take any questions or observations that you have.
Yeah, that's very, that's very helpful. Gougham, thank you. Wayne?
Yeah, of course. Thank you very much. And thank you, Julie. And it's a pleasure to have everybody in the room. So this is a, as I said, it's the Audit Wales inquiry to bill with charge of governance. It's the draft response. So the, the letter's been sent by Audit Wales and it seeks, and what we're doing today is seeking the commission's review and endorsement on the responses to make an effective management from the parts of governance. As you can see in appendix one, appendixes one to three for submission to Audit Wales. That's where if you have had the questions, we've been sent, we've acquired questions within the final table. You'll see if we do go to appendix one, two and three, you'll have last year's responses for reference. And then you'll have the draft responses this year, which have been prepared with the offices. As I can say, it was part of the audit course of the 24/25, Audit Wales have issued a formal request for documented responses on governance areas relevant to audit authorities' financial statements to control risk management oversight by us with laws and regulations and related obligations and disclosures. The responses contained in the report provide assurances that robust systems are in place, manage the risk of fraud to legal compliance, identify and disclose related party transactions. As we mentioned, the type of reports were done that no material fraud legal non-compliance has been identified during the period of audit review. So going through the letter, it says it's relatively straightforward. I think for reference, last year's responses are next, and next to each of the questions. And then we divide this one's, this one's next. And so I think to bring it to yourself, just to see what's in there for approval prior to submission.
Yes, thank you. We're in a, a stage of transition, Julie, with our finance and treasurer. So we've got our new treasurer on the line, Sarah Halbert. So Chrysler, welcome to the meeting, Sarah. So I should imagine that you'll be involved in this going forward. So we, you know, we, we got to the point with Lisa and our Wayne's introducing it here. But going forward, Julie, it'll be Sarah Halbert's neck on the block. Okay? Thank you. Welcome, yeah. Welcome to audit. Are there any other comments? Yes.
I, I am, I am the worst proofreader in the whole world, Wayne. So I caveat everything I'm going to ask now because it might be I've got the wrong end of it. Within some of this year's responses, we refer to the fire authority still. I, I think, and in a way there is other areas, we refer to the commissioners. I think it just needs to spoof that too. So for example, one area here, it requires for those who change section three, the fire authorities, finance and committee, think it just probably just needs a quick run through because I think that just needs to change the language. Unless I've misread it.
No, we had a conversation with Audit Wales around this, I think, in terms of your position and your, the laws that put you into position. It's to undertake the rules of the fire rescue authority in addition to additional terms of reference. So in the last year's annual governance statement, I looked at the commissioners, it was asked for the purposes of audit here. It's, it's still auditing the, the fire authority regardless of who's in the position.
So we are the fire authority.
You are the fire authority in the purposes of this report based on previous conversations I had with, with Audit Wales. That's how you're recognized in, in that. So the governance statement, I will have explained the intricacies of, of the rules in previous responses I have. I can ask Audit Wales, that would help just to clarify what it would be.
Julie, I don't want to put you on the spot now, but do you have a view on that?
Yeah, I've not been involved, yeah, I've not been involved in, in the audit for very long, all those discussions. But I think that is our understanding that you're undertaking responsibilities on behalf of the authority. However, what I would say with this letter, we would take it as, you know, the intention, we would understand, you know, what you get now in terms of the letter coming to us in terms of what you're talking about. But if you wanted a more formal response, I could get back to you or speak to Kate, who's a bit more up to date with these things. But yeah, appreciate that.
I, I think if you could get back to us, we would be most grateful. We want to ensure total accuracy. And we are under great scrutiny because it's such an unusual position.
It is, yeah, yeah.
You know, let's just make sure that all the i's adopted and the t's crossed. Okay. Thank you very much. That'd be very helpful. Anything else? Okay, so we need to review the contents of the Audit Wales letter, which we clearly have because Paul's picked up on those areas. So well done, Carl.
Even if it isn't that relevant.
It may, it may well be, like I said, a different document before. And I think, I think I was, I was a conversation we'd had very early on in the 10 year glimpse of the purposes of 70s documents you are.
Okay, let's just make sure we're doing it all properly, okay? And then we endorse the proposed responses, the penances weren't sufficient to audit Wales by the required deadline of 30th of June 2025. We all on board with that? Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you very much. That's that agenda item. So we now move on to agenda item number eight. The South coast fire rescue service contaminants program. That's Christian on page 79. Your agenda, Christian.
Thank you, Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. So this, this paper is for information only and it serves really as an assurance to you as commissioners and to SLT that we are taking contaminants and health status of our staff really seriously. It also provides reassurance to both our firefighters, our staff and their family that we are also taking the world of contaminants really seriously. I don't intend to take you through line by line on the, on the actual paper itself. I'm going to draw you to three key areas of the paper. And the first bit I'll look at is the drivers that sit behind this and the research scientific papers. I'll then talk to you briefly around how we're going to implement that and how we're going to work through that. And finally, I'll talk around the governance and the risk management of contaminants. So the first thing I'll do is take, is draw your attention to appendix one, where I put in there some research background and some scientific papers that have been carried out over the last couple of years. But I'll draw your attention firstly to 2022 and the World Health Organization statement. And the statement was really clear that the industry of firefighting is carcinogenic. So the World Health Organization to make a statement, there has to be some strong scientific evidence and background behind that. So our key driver for this piece of work is really on the back of the World Health Organization, recognizing that there are also other bits of research that have been picked up. And certainly in 2020, University of Central Lancashire, so UCLAN, published a report and some recommendations within that. So that resits the, the research background and there are many other bits of research and scientific background, but they are the key ones that's driving us as an organization to make significant change. On top of that, you know yourselves, our health and safety, we have a legal obligation to manage risks that we know about. carcinogenic and contaminants are one. And when I'm making reference to contaminants, I'm talking not only about fire effluents, I'm also talking about floodwaters and I'm also talking about other industry, industrial issues such as sorry, I lost my mind there. Sorry, I'll come back to all that. Sorry. So I'll come back to that point. So the key, key drivers really around research background, health and safety. And also with the report that picked up on the HSCs and health and safety executive have made reference on coming out and inspecting fire services. They've already been out to Scotland and we as a service will be bringing them in early to engage with them early before any inspections carried out. I'm going to touch back on a bit that I just had a brain fog on and that's around asbestos. So apologies. So three key areas around flooding, fire effluent and asbestos. Really apologies for that. So I'm going to just quickly move on then to how we're going to deliver. So as an organization, we've had a working group, panelists working group for a number of years. And the group have done particularly well on dealing with issues. The reason why we've moved to a more permanent position on a group or a team is to have a look at the service as a holistic package. So the working group themselves, we're a collective of people from the organization, from different parts, working on small subject matter. The purpose of the group that we've got in place at the moment, dedicated contaminants group, is to look at this permanently in terms of the holistic. So when we look at things like the cleaning pathway and how we can decontaminate ourselves, we need to look at this from a service wide, not just from a small issues. So we've, we've put into place now a dedicated team. The team have come at no cost to the organization. We fill posts that we already had you on the establishment. And that team are sat within ORM, within the resilience and planning team. Whilst the team are working on the agenda that you've seen on the appendix two, that is the 22 areas they'll be looking at within the next 12 months. And even though there's some loose time scales to that, the team have been tasked with having a, pulling together a clear roadmap and a financial picture to go along that. The reason you haven't got that today is because they've only just formed themselves. So we've only just put them in place at the moment. So in time, they will come forward with a clear roadmap of how we're going to implement some of the changes within the organization. Recognizing that a lot will come with some financial investment. The first one which we have got financial investment for is for the permanent position in Cardiff Gates. I know we have £3 million set aside in readiness for that. I would suggest there'll be more financial requests coming through to the audit and finance committee for other works that we need to put into place. I'll just pause there a second. Any questions?
Yes, sorry. I thank you for the explanation of the, the group that's being set out. So what are the governance arrangements, what are the reporting and governance arrangements?
So the governance and risk management. So first and around risk management.
In that context, just we pause there on the budget element there. So. Just took, we paused there on the budget element there. So obviously a lot of that's capital spend potentially.
Yeah.
Um, honestly, one is the capital plan. Um, and you can't know what you can't know, can you? But the sooner that we can get an oversight of the capital, that means that we can make good decision going forward around capital spend and the budget setting future.
Yes.
But also that engagement with Welsh government officials around some of the risks. And I would say that needs to be done on a three day basis because the risks are going to sit across the three days in it. Um, and the earlier you can do that.
Yeah.
Consistently probably would be a stronger position for us, I would say, looking at colleagues that have worked in government.
Yeah, we, yeah, so sooner on than later, you know, because this is a new risk or an increasing risk. As, as Carl said, it's across Wales, Welsh government need to know that this is a new risk that didn't happen before. So this would be a new budget heading that they didn't have previously.
Yeah.
Um, to look for money.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Chair and Carl. So in terms of the scoping out of the work, um, you'll notice within the, uh, appendix two, there's some. Is some of the activity will require business cases because there's some real big ticket items in there. And the reason for the holistic view is so we can have a look at this across the organization rather than just small packages in different, um, silo mentality. This has to be a whole service approach. Uh, and I'll give you an example of that is when we look at how we, in the moment, our kit gets sent off to a third party organization. If we decide to take that on ourselves because of the timing of getting kit back into flow. Then obviously there's going to come costs for that and estate strategy changes to be able to accommodate things like deep cleaning wash machines, et cetera. So there's, there's some real interdependencies in there. Um, so Kirsty, can I get back onto your point on governance?
And what is also really important is that we know as we head towards the end of financial year, sometimes. On capital expended, the Welsh government does have some flexibility.
Yes.
Uh, because the best capital program in the world never fully commits to it. So I think, you know, this is a prime case, isn't it, of having some schemes potentially ready to go. That should there be some capital flexibility from Welsh government this year, that we will have something that obviously is. Very important to us as an organization for our staff and for Wales demonstrating back to the social partnership.
Yeah.
Being, you know, um, the best employer that we can be. So I think that's another thing to have stuff ready to go.
Yeah.
Utilize that opportunity.
Yeah, just on those, first bit was just on the finance. And so three million zero miles, talking about Cardiff Gate, that's the bit that belongs to us down the bottom. Does that have an impact on how we would view the PFI, the whole site, if we had invested in that particular area? Are we sort of committing ourselves to, if we've invested in capital to that area before we decided what we're going to do with it?
Yeah, we know, we know, we know we need conversations around what, what the long term plan looks like for Cardiff Gate. And absolutely that needs to come into the conversation. Um.
Okay, good. And the second part is, I noticed that the NFCC are, are just waiting guidance, you know, the FEU have been. Out the doors on this really quickly and that's all really good and that's welcome.
Yeah.
I guess the thing is, in terms of the sector, so you take holistic approach and we're looking at what we're doing. And there's what's the sector doing and then what's the rest of the world doing? This affects firefighters globally.
Yes, yes.
So who's, have we found out who's the best in class? Who's ahead, you know?
Yeah.
Are we, are we looking at that internationally or nationally to make sure that we don't reinvent the wheel ourselves?
I'll, I'll answer it two ways. I think if you look at firstly NFCC statement is ready to be produced. Uh, it's embargoed at the moment. Um, but that's, that's imminent. So that's one, one area. I think if you looked at, uh, the whole of the UK. If you, if this was a horse race, there's, there's different horses on different parts of the race at the moment. And we've got to do what's right for us. Um, but just coming back from Sweden a couple of weeks ago, uh, had my eyes open to the yard of possibility. And the fact that the Swedes at the moment are probably thirty years ahead of us in this arena. So there's a lot to learn from our international colleagues in terms of decontamination. Um, so the Swedish FRS have really invested quite heavily in how they decontaminate their staff. And more importantly, really pushing human behavior because we can put all this in place. But until our staff change their behaviors, we won't miss any difference. So I've, I've taken a lot away from Sweden. I've taken a lot away from the USA as well, certainly from Colorado. Um, there's some really big stuff, um, but we've got to be mindful that every action has an equal opposite reaction. What have we put in place is going to cost us either financially or it'll cost us in some different processes. Hence why I've asked for a team to see this across.
Glad to see that you're doing international stuff in this because it's something that affects.
I spoke to, to quite a few FRSs in the UK and they're all doing what they think is right. Um, there's no clear guidance at the moment. The only clear guidance we've got is from UCLAN, uh, with a couple of points that they've made reference to. Uh, which I've asked the team to do a clear risk assessment and a gap analysis on that UCLAN report. To give us a baseline because we need to have a baseline for the, for PIs. Um, which then leads me on quite nicely on to the governance and risk management. So. And firstly, it's risk management, we've identified this as a corporate risk. So on our corporate risk register, that is now clearly on there, point two five five. And I am the accountable risk holder for that, uh, risk. Uh, within the governance structure, um, so the team will be governed by the health and safety committee that ACFO Noda chairs. Um, it'll also go through SLT on a regular basis. It'll be brought, brought back to board of commissioners on an annual basis and as an update report. But I'm fairly sure that you'll see, uh, a regular presence through the finance and audit committee. Because there's going to be some, um, ask here financially, once we understand that picture.
That's where we keep our eye on this then.
That's where you get to keep your, your eye on it. Um, but you will get an annual report where we are and SLT will get regular than, than that at the moment. In terms of priorities for the team, three clear priorities for me that they need to do. One is a, uh, risk assessment on the, um, actual baseline. Give us a starting block and we're taking a bow tie methodology to that. Uh, the second one is around, uh, decontamination at scene. We've had a number of large incidents now in the organization. Where we haven't, um, put our best foot forward in terms of decontamination at scene. And the third priority at the moment for them is the policy. Make sure what we've seen in the policy is actually happening out there. I will probably stop there. Four questions.
Yeah, Carl.
Not so many questions, but a couple of updates for colleagues' information. HFIC FRS will do their first contamination inspection. I understand they're rolling out into Bedfordshire quite soon and that will be part of their inspection of every fire rescue service. So hopefully, as we gather information, that, that, that should help that.
Start to fill gaps in knowledge, don't you?
Yeah, but she didn't seem that excited about being the first. Um, we took her on the stand, but, but it's interesting.
Yeah.
And there's the National World Fire Chiefs Council twenty twenty six. This is one of the key agenda items on that.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, just coming back from Sweden from the FEU, which is their, their equivalent, the NFCC, uh, it was a number one risk in Europe. It's around contaminants. Second to that was recruitment.
It's clearly, uh, you know, a tough agenda issue then.
I, I've also reached out to Austria and, uh, Austria have got a very interesting model. So it's pretty much all, uh, retained. So this ninety seven percent, I think, but I've reached out to them and they've got some interesting approaches to give you information.
Thanks. So work that I'll be doing over the top of this, um, so while the team are working, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at what the future looks like for firefighting. Because first part of any risk is trying to eliminate it. So technologies such as robotic firefighting. And other entry methods into buildings, uh, waste fires, et cetera. We need to start looking at. How we can not send firefighters into these, into these positions in the first place, which is probably a longer term strategy for us.
The world is changing. Um, and it's not just like those Hollywood blockbusters, you know, just thinking the future, of something, that future film where everyone was a robot. But they still had an Audi TT car. So that was.
I know.
Yeah.
It's okay if I make an observation.
Yes.
Because I support, uh, Chris's, um, presentation really in terms of operations at the moment, you know, across the board. We're doing our talks there to firefighters. Because, you know, from a generation of firefighters where decontamination, contamination probably wasn't as prevalent as today. Because awareness and knowledge was, was lacking within this area. But they've just spoke what Chris is doing. I mean, I think it's fantastic in terms of what we, what we put in place and the, the knowledge and experience of the team. Here and there, looking at internationally and everything else. For me, it's around how we change the behaviors and the cultures of our current staff.
Yes.
Because what we find is that when we implement projects of this nature, it's how we measure how those behaviors have been implemented. So you could put everything in place, but if people don't want to undertake that activity and that, that's where the danger comes from. So it's just about encouraging individuals and we do that as much as we are, as we can right now to raise. Their understanding and level of knowledge that when we start implementing this in a step process. Um, that they, that they've put on board and engaging with, you know, something that's going to keep them healthy, uh, long into retirement age. I'll just change.
Um.
And. Have we got common support for you?
Yeah, we have.
Because, you know, there is a bit of, isn't it, of, and it's a horrible thing to say, but we know sadly people have been passed away because. Some of those stories, like, you know, they hit home, don't they, harder than us sending people to do it?
Yeah, we've got comments.
Chief.
Uh, yeah, on a, on a very personal, uh, level. Um, I, I really want to make sure we drive this. So I have, uh, suffered from a cancer which was caused by burning hydrocarbons. And, uh, I do not want anyone to have to go through the process of doing bone marrow transplants. It's untidy. Um, so, uh, from my perspective, when I went down to the, uh, that first event that we had down at Cardiff Gate, you know, that, that, that was an absolute driver for me. So, uh, so Chris has got all my support to make sure that we push this forwards. And, you know, this is really something to work in social partnership with the unions on. So, uh, real, real backup for me.
Thank you, Chief. Pride.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just to acknowledge the, the good work that Chris is pushing out on. And also something Fitch said. To pay tribute to the, uh, the lobbying of the Fire Brigade Union. Because it's the Fire Brigade Union who really grasped this one a number of years ago. And started pushing the chiefs through the NFCC and senior leadership teams harder to make progress quicker. And they were way off, um, you know, way from this. And we can acknowledge that, you know, in terms of that social partnership, Julie. They were right about this. Um, you know, and I signed up to some of the trials they did myself. Uh, where they were doing testing of your blood for, for cancer genics and, and through UCLAN. So very proactive work by the trade unions on this. Um, and the work Chris is doing is rising to the challenge.
Okay, well, we need to note the report and the contaminants work activity. Yeah. All right, good. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to eight point two then, for which please for the organizational update.
Lovely. Uh, thank you very much, Chair. Uh, now I'm in a slightly odd position because this is a verbal statement, but there is actually a paper in the, in the. Uh, so that will allow me to save you a bit of time and you won't have to listen to me, uh, say the whole thing because I'll, I'll abridge various bits.
Thank you.
Um, but I will go into a bit of detail nevertheless because, uh, we're in a really very important juncture, I think, particularly after the. Various publications and the HMIC one was an important one last week. So first of all, I'd like to thank members of the Service of Commissioners for inspiring me into the organization so rapidly and effectively. I've just hit my six month mark. Um, I've now visited more than ninety seven percent of the operational corporate staff and contractors who work in lots of teams across. The service, I participate in exercises, attended incidents and joined service members for competitions, events and public engagements. And also taken part in training at, uh, Cardiff Gate as a recruit to get a full of the life, uh, in the service, which I thoroughly enjoyed, by the way. Um, I've spoken to many people across the service on a one to one basis. They spared their time to share their thoughts with me, with me about positive aspects of the service. But also their challenges, frustrations, hopes and fears, and some of those have been really enlightening. Um, so the period that I've enjoyed so far has given me very valuable insight into ops, support activities and structures, processes, policies. And systemic issues confronting us as an organization. There remain many challenges, but there are also many positives shining through. Um, I'm very grateful for professionalism, dedication and compassion I see. Uh, on a daily basis from our ops corporate, uh, and contracting staff as they fulfill, fulfill their responsibilities around the clock. Regardless, uh, of the weather to serve the one point six million people in South Wales. And that's very. Uh, there's much to do, but we're moving in the right direction now and, uh, and I feel a head of steam that we've got on and a, and a real energy in the service. Um, I'm confident that the transformation that we're undergoing will achieve the ambitious vision that we've set ourselves. Uh, and the main reason for my optimism is that so many of our people are eager for change. In fact, they want change probably faster than we can even deliver it. And that, I never led an organization where so many people wanted to change before. And that is the real, uh, positive point, I think. Uh, but I'm under no illusion whatsoever about the required scale of change and pace that we need to deliver that at. Uh, following the Fenella Morris report and the Welsh Government series of thematic reviews. And then in my second week, His Majesty's Inspectorate of Constabulary's Fire and Rescue Service, uh, inspection. Uh, there's been six months of writing up of that and that, that, that report was just, just released last week. All of these reports and inspections have delved into our service in detail and have made very difficult reading, I think, in many cases. Um, they clearly outline the many areas of concern that require improvement and new approaches. But since that, that HMI report six months ago, and following my arrival, we've been extremely busy. And I'll go into some of the detail that will allay hopefully some of your concerns, commissioners. Uh, we do an overarching strategy based upon a tried and tested ends, ways and means methodology. Uh, and that's been a complex piece of work that's been completed in only three months, whereas normally it takes about six months to a year to develop one of those. Um, it's included extensive testing across the service and from my records, I cannot see. That South Wales Fire Rescue Service had such an overarching strategy in the past. Um, the strategy starts with ambitious new vision for developing the service for the future. And following extensive consultation of, of our people, we've revised the mission and values and developed a new motto, courage to act and to serve. The strategy has identified ten key areas to develop in the organization with sixty work strands to deliver on those ten areas. Uh, the work strands have been prioritized according to resource and time. That's a piece of work that is still ongoing. Um, they've set out a holistic approach to providing the ten step forward transformation program. The Fenella Morris Casey Report recommendations, the Welsh Government thematic reviews and recommendations from the HMI report. Uh, the strategy is a significant step in developing South Wales Fire Rescue Service in both the long, the short term. But probably more importantly, the longer term, uh, uh, future for the service in a well considered and cost conscious manner. And at the moment, um, I'm looking out to about an eight year timeframe for us to achieve the vision that we've set. The, uh, in terms of governance that lies within the strategy, the service has reviewed and improved its internal governance arrangements. This includes a new governance framework and internal, uh, improvement board, strategic change in culture committee. A culture and connection board to support social partnership. Uh, an independent advisory group is currently recruiting. Actually, I'm seeing some, uh, some interest in that, which is pleasing. Um, the step forward program has in particular a new portfolio and management office which is being stood up. That's very important. Uh, it's a way that we can have program managers improving the way we manage projects and improve them now and into the future. An approach, uh, this is an approach that has been proven to be effective in other organizations, including fire and rescue sector. Um, and I'm really surprised frankly that an organization that necessarily has so many projects never had this in place in the past. Uh, we've, we've got a strategic plan. Uh, the strategic plan lies underneath the strategy. That's something that did exist in the past, but in some things. Uh, the, the strategy informs the direction of that plan and the strategy looks so much further out. So that's a really important development and, uh, that's particularly important of delivering our, our approaches to prevention, protection and response. And that's crucial for filling particularly the HMI report and the Welsh Government thematic reviews. Um, on performance and risk, we have a new performance management framework and a new approach to risk. Uh, which is called the Bowtie Methodology. And together we've unlocked significant progress in, uh, in developing a new service wide. Community risk management plan that Chris is, uh, overseeing. Uh, we've established a leadership in personnel development academy. That's building partnerships and building a trainee syllabus at the moment. Uh, and the focus of that is to build instructors and then build, uh, uh, allow those instructors to go out and, and instruct. Particularly looking at leadership and the various gaps that we've identified in the service that, that. Finally likely played a major part in the, uh, cultural failings identified in the Fenella Morris report. Turning to people, so above all, our strategy recognizes that our people are our greatest asset. The service we provide to the people in South Wales fundamentally, fundamentally depends upon them, as does the success of the major transformation journey we are on. It will not be lost to you, commissioners, but in the last eighteen months, we've been, we, it's been a very demoralizing time for South Wales Fire Rescue Service. And, uh, reports out there are that morale has been at rock bottom. And it just took another dent last week, uh, uh, after the release of the HMIC FRS report. Thus central to my leadership of the organization is the need to think about culture in our strategy and to invest in our people. And there are a few tangible examples of things that we have done, uh, very recently that will improve morale. So we've developed an innovative new approach to provide compensation for public holidays for our operational staff. That's under consultation with the representative bodies. Um, it's not been resolved yet, but we're working on that in social partnership. We built a new fatigue management system for corporate and operational staff. Uh, and that will be delivered, uh, I've, I've got a, a final briefing next week. That's a very important, uh, uh, juncture for us. We've established a structured, uh, approach to honors and awards to ensure that the hard work of and bravery of our people is not only recognized within the organization. But is also considered for Welsh government and royal recognition. Citations for the amazing work of our people have already been raised through this new approach at the national level. We developed a review of the promotion intelligent. We've developed a review of the promotion intelligent talent management system, uh, that's been worked through with, and, uh, 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 various members of our staff and is being presented to the, uh, the representative bodies, uh, round about now. Has that been completed, Alison?
Yeah.
Yep. Um, we've introduced a new ACAS mediation programme that didn't exist previously, and that's a major way of unlocking the situations which otherwise would lead to grievance. Uh, we're making the service more family friendly to recognise the support that our families give to our personnel. As a result, we successfully trial families' days at some of our stations. And, uh, for anyone who's in the, uh, the region of Blind Abbot this weekend, there is one of those taking place. Um, we've embarked on a programme to really understand and invest the traditions, customs, history, human language, symbols and identity of all of the subcultures within the service. And that's a really important means by which we can develop the positive aspects of service, which then we can use to, uh, to, uh, identify and drown out some of the more negative aspects. Uh, also in the, uh, in the strategy is a measure of concern of mine, and that's the level of bureaucracy that hampers progress in the organisation. This is not limited to South Wales Fire and Rescue Service, actually. It's something that is common to most organisations in the world. So red tape reductions are thrust at the strategy that will allow the organisation to unlock capacity and accelerate transformation. As part of that, and in tangible form, we've, uh, a new legal team working at pace to review and modernise the outdated policies and procedures that hamper our ambition. We've also recently employed a chief of staff sitting at the end of the table there, uh, in, uh, Jake Alpitz, whose role is to oversee the effective functioning of the headquarters, which in my view, despite people working extremely hard, is siloed, fragmented and somewhat inefficient. And that has led to a significant morale problem at the very core of the organisation. So Jake is working at pace to align things and make things more efficient, more efficient. And we are turning things around already in the headquarters. Turning to operations, uh, the HMI assessment of South Wales Fire and Rescue Service, uh, include, uh, looking at how efficient and effective the service is and how it looks after its people. That was completed in November. Draft report presented to South Wales Fire and Rescue Service to check factual accuracy. But we released that, uh, that report was released to us last week. As I mentioned, there was a bit of a morale dent to our people, but, uh, I am concerned by some of the things in that report, but I'm not phased. In fact, I welcome the report because it's provided, uh, provided us with a very holistic view of the service. And we now have all the information we need to move out. So to our staff across the organisation who are feeling a dip in morale, I send out a message of reassurance. Um, the report provides us with everything we need and that will allow us to deliver upon our vision, which is to work together to be an outstanding fire and rescue service, protecting South Wales today and ambitiously innovating for tomorrow. I'd just point out that word outstanding fire and rescue service, I don't think there's a single service at the moment in the United Kingdom that is classed as outstanding. So that is a, a really serious ambition for us to set out to achieve. Um. Thematic reviews. We've made major headway here in attaining the recommendations of the four thematic reviews. The SLT recently agreed to something which is really important, and that was a case to release funds to purchase two hundred and seventy thousand pounds of operational equipment, following extensive research into the new training methodology and the development of new doctrine. And that doctrine has been highlighted to other services as actually being a really, really important move that we're, uh, uh, ahead of the game on. So in terms of meeting the thematic review recommendations, we will achieve one hundred percent of recommendations from the Grenfell thematic review by the first of September twenty five. One hundred percent of the recommendations from the training thematic review by thirty first of December twenty five. All recommendations for broadening the role thematic review, except for shift equalisation, which is, which is extremely complex and has been subsumed into a much bigger and broader piece of work we're doing in relation to the team management. And that, uh, one hundred percent of the recommendations for the operational effectiveness review will be achieved by the first of September twenty twenty five. So making major headway there. Operational assurance. This is something which is of particular importance to the HMI report. We're overfilling our operational assurance process following research, benchmarking and significant workforce engagement. This will lead to more expedient and effective identification of trends on the incident ground. And will allow the organisation to move quickly to implement necessary, necessary changes to tactics, equipments and procedures. Uh, this will allow us to pivot to being a more effective learning organisation and will enhance the way we maintain operational standards across the organisation. We're also adopting a just culture approach that's used in other high risk operational industries, notably aviation, oil and gas. And this will allow us to pass away the debrief, identify lessons and conduct our risk analysis. On risks, risk to our community, risk is a major area of concern for HMI CFRS. The last time a real, uh, risk to the community was considered holistically was in twenty thirteen. And I'll skip the rest of that paragraph. Suffice to say, the CRMP is, uh, is underway. Risk to our people. Chris has already mentioned some of the risks, uh, in the last, uh, in, in the last report. We've rolled out a new bow tie risk management system. Only one other fire and rescue service is doing that in the UK at the moment. Um, it takes an entirely new approach to managing risk to our people to ensure they're protected as they go about their duties. It's particularly focused on risk to life and serious injury. It's already, it already been highlighted and it's already highlighted some areas of risk that had not previously been accounted for, such as fatigue management. Uh, events and news, uh, I've, I've put a list of, uh, various items of events and news that are very positive, I think. So, uh, South Wales Fire and Rescue Service reached the National Fire and Rescue Final last month in Scotland. Sadly, uh, we did suffer a six nil defeat, but we made the final, which is awesome. Meanwhile, Jenny Scoble has represented Wales and the Six Nations and will now go on to play in the World Cup with, which is outstanding. We, we've worked extremely hard to make sure that at that representative level, we are able to allow our personnel to go off and, uh, and, and compete in major events. On youth engagement and global collaboration, the National Fire Cadet Games come, coming to Cardiff on the twenty fifth of July to be hosted by us. Planning is progressing really well. Uh, meanwhile, five cadets from Bridge End, Abercavanian, both were selected following a competitive process to represent the service and the UK at the Bulgaria Youth Symposium, uh, and they're, 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 they've actually just come back from that. And some of the photos that I've seen are superb and it really, really do, uh, become quite emotive because we're getting, we're giving people amazing opportunities uh, to see amazing things. Uh, the Ukraine convoy, the service participated in its third Ukraine, UK convoy, organised through the firey charity and home office in which thirty two fire appliances, no, two thousand pieces of it were sent out to Ukraine. We sent eight appliances and were, uh, that was the biggest contribution in terms of, uh, appliances for that particular convoy. Uh, nine 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 days, our first nine 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 day this year took place at my stay. It involved an enormous amount of work by corporate and operational staff and was a resounding success. Uh, I recommend to the Commissioners and others listening today to, uh, do come up to one of the three remaining events. Uh, they are superb, uh, and lots of fun. And Mike was there at that. And, uh, and, and we had a really good set up at that particular event, which is superb. Um, in conclusion then, um, last week, the release of the HMI CFR, CFR, uh, CFRS report was to many another morale to the, uh, another morale lonesome service. But I'd like to remind staff that the actual inspection took place six years ago. We have moved on significantly in that time. Um, we're in a new era now. Much has changed since the inspection was done. And as I mentioned earlier, it gives us valuable information to work on to improve in our search of excellence. My early assessment, the strategy already covers all of the work required in this latest report. However, we're doing more detailed analysis to make sure that we really do cover everything. And we are going to be working with HMI to make sure that we do, uh, progress at pace. So to all of you, uh, my message is more of positivity. Look at the strategy, keep your chins up, maintain your faith. Uh, we've got hard work ahead of us. We know that, but we will achieve our vision. Uh, we need to work to, work together as one to become an outstanding fire and rescue service. That is a long journey, but we will get there. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Uh, so this is the first report of this kind that the chief has presented to us. And you know, your enthusiasm, chief, is entirely infectious. So, Doctor O'Neil, thank you so much for that. I, I would, I would just say that, you know, the report has been presented and, and, and we would, we would, I mean, you know, you can test us on it to see if we've read it. So, you know, perhaps if we could just have some, you know, main points next time, because, um, uh, otherwise I'm not sure if people will have read it, if you take us through, so in such a detailed manner. Um, any comments or questions or observations, Chief, please? Yes, Paul?
Well, you're is ready. I, I, I note the operational insurance changes. I, I personally, I'm not seeing them. I'd be really interested to see them at some point. I don't know if we've gone through current missions, but that, that was fairly fundamental to HMICs and also some of the customers. So really welcome having a look at those. Um, I, I, I'm going to show my utter buffoonery now. I, I've never been exposed to the bow tie method, methodology. So I genuinely don't know what it is or how it runs. So I don't, other Commissioners might, um.
You have to create.
Yeah. I would welcome a kind of overview or understanding of what that looks like at, at some point. Um, I'll be, yeah. If, if you don't mind, that'd be really, really great. You mentioned prioritisation, which has been kind of the key themes that we've talked about, um, more broadly in, in this group. How close are we to kind of that prioritisation and naming down? I know, um, Dominic, you've got your paper later on, but that prioritises some of the areas, but it doesn't prioritise everything, does it really? And it kind of loads that prioritisation quite a lot.
Um, so, uh, I'll tell Dom actually, um, uh, you know, we, we, we have plans. Um, Dom, of you.
So the prioritisation, um, that is the high level of things that we've talked about here. So the risk pieces, uh, the decontamination piece, the two causes of concern with pain, my so and FRS will be the, the main priorities across that. And then the other work streams fit into either the, the strategy piece of work or they fit into the HMI CFRS. Our recommendations should be spread out across a couple of them. And to better. So we have those all in that, um, Commissioners, I'm fairly comfortable with the prioritisation of those. I think that we're up on the priority one risks and our main focus will be for those. Um, I think that there is some more work to be done to chisel out the, the definitive milestones of all of those pieces of work so that we can manage them in a more effective way. I think that currently our focus are upon the right spaces, the right prioritisation pieces. So the governance, the strategy, the HMI to decontamination. So the things that we are up to you are top level priority.
But, and from, from me to add to that, so, uh, so we, we actually went away, had a, had a full day of, uh, senior leadership team prioritisation. Um, putting it into four different priority groups. Um, it was really interesting to see to begin with, at the beginning of that, at that point, lots of things were in priority one. Um, lots of things were, um, in quarter one. And when we actually lay it all out and worked together with the team, we realised that that can't happen. So uh, they will spread out and, uh, re-prioritise. Um, an area that, uh, that more work needs to be done is what stops to allow the transformation programme, programme to go ahead. I have asked Dom though to produce us a, a graphics, uh, strategic level view of where we are in that prioritisation. So that will be inbound fairly shortly.
And when will we have that by? What's the date for that?
So we should have to bring that to the, the next board. So they're working on that right now. That feeding. So we did that initial piece for the exit strategy with the Commissioners with all the detailed pieces. So that's on that piece.
I, I, I have actually asked, uh, asked Dom to, to give me a, a first cut of that by, uh, by the end of next week. Um.
Okay.
But I, I, I'll, I'll testing that to make sure that that, that I'm happy with that.
We'd rather see it sooner on than later, obviously. But that's, that's good. Thank you. Um, sorry, Kirsty?
Yes, if I may, um. Uh, it's relating to the data that's included in Appendix one for the report. And obviously there's a lot of activities going on. I'm just wondering the training scales for the mandatory training element of it. Uh, when, when are we measuring from? From when to where? Uh.
Uh, which, which bit? The?
The mandatory training because, um, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying that a considerable effort hasn't gone in to achieve a seventy percent. But that, when you think of that as a percentage of our organisation, that's still, you know, a local chunk of people who have not completed mandatory training. And that's the key, isn't it? The word is mandatory, as in everybody. So I'm just trying to understand, is that because we've only got to this point in the year or when would we, yeah?
So that's, sorry, that's not my piece of work. That is the starting point essentially, Commissioners. So that is where we, we were since then. The chief has, has released the directive to the organisation and sent out to staff that that will be one hundred percent. By, I think it's the middle of next week or so. So that, that seventy percent is where we started.
And then, um, so training is one thing, isn't it? Making everybody sit in front of the computer or sit in the session. And how, do we have any plans then, you think, for the, like, try and gauge impact? Of, you know, because one would hope, wouldn't it? Having it, having everybody go through this and this would have an impact on behaviours. And I'm just wondering whether there is, it's very hard, isn't it?
Perhaps. So I, it, it was really interesting. I, I, uh, I was at the NFCC and there was, uh, there was some evidence that's been, academic work done about this, this very type of training and how effective it is. And there is evidence out there that it's not as effective as you might want. Um, so one of the things that I was, I was chatting to the LND team, our DICE representative earlier on last week. Um, let's have a look at how we, how we can actually turn the dial on this. So there's a bit of exploratory work. I've also been working with another organisation that, uh, that has a similar finding to the, uh, um, to the, uh, NFCC, uh, paper that had been written. And thi- this is really interesting because I, I think there's actually an opportunity for us here to, to break out and actually come up with a different approach. Okay, so this is a traditional approach to DEI training. Um, I, I'm exploring new avenues here and part of the new avenue links in with the, uh, with the Leadership Personal Development Academy, in which the, the, the new way of doing things that this other organisation that I've been engaged with, um, one of the things that they're doing is making sure that all leadership and teamwork behaviour, at every single event that you do, you discuss inclusivity. Inclusivity being the real driver to making sure your teams are effective. So that's, that's breaking news really, because I, I've only been working on that last week. But that's something I think we can really make a dial on. For the time being, this is our training package that we have in place. Uh, I've issued a directive for everyone to be complete by fifteenth of June. Now, I don't expect everybody to be complete because obviously some people are ill and things like that. But suffice to say, uh, an order has gone out to be completed by the.
That's a Sunday. It's my birthday. That's all I know.
Thank you, Chief. Chair, could I, could I just add to what the Chief and others have said? So, um, NFCC have produced, um, some critical dashboards as well. So they, uh, within those dashboards, there are different metrics to measure culture, behaviours and that sort of thing. So we are looking at adopting those. We've also been talking to an organisation around how they can help us, uh, move the dial on our culture, starting at the foundational level. Um, and, uh, also our PR system measures performance and behaviour. So we should see an uptick in terms of the behaviour piece coming out more in, in that piece of work.
There, there is something to add to that though, in terms of grievances, et cetera. Um, I, I wouldn't be surprised as we go through our journey, but actually more people are standing up saying things. I think we saw that out of the Fenella Morris report with an, an uptick. Um, so we just need to be a little bit careful with, with biggest while preferences and things, um, and people reports and things, because actually we do want people to report stuff.
Yes. Anything further?
No, thank you.
Okay, in that case, um, it's just, just a, a title on page one or two. So just for mere recommendation, it was seen to end, okay? So when we issue papers, if we can do that, yeah. Um, at the last, we, uh, uh, we reviewed the report, uh, and we now have insights into the significant changes happening at South Wales Fire and Rescue Service. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief. Okay, let's move on then to Peter, who has been waiting patiently online for eight point three. Peter, if you'd like to introduce the paper, please?
Good afternoon and thank you, Chair. Um, good afternoon, everyone. Um, yes, I'd ask today to provide an update and overview um, of the work, um, within the resilience and planning team, um, within operational risk management. The, uh, team responsible in the main for key elements, uh, to meet the organisation's legislative responsibilities in relation to the Fire and Rescue Services Act, as well as the Civil Continuities Act two thousand and four. Um, and, and, and this report seeks to, for, for, for note by the, by the Commissioners to, um, to, to, as, as an update of, for the work that's been ongoing within the team. Resilience and planning, uh, team look after four main key areas, uh, in, in light of those sort of, the Resilience and planning, uh, team look after four main key areas, uh, in, in light of those sort of the work we were due towards the, the mitigation for the service. And that major event planning, um, operational planning, um, and tactical planning for the high risk comasites. Service wide business continuity plans and business impact assessments. As well as the coordination of the departmental business continuity work, including the beast, business impact assessment and business continuity plans. So in, in line with the, uh, I'm not, I'm not going to sort of go through the full paper i- in detail, but just to give you some headlines. Um, part of the key role in, in line with our ma- major event planning is, is to coordinate and liaise with our multi-agency partners, both blue light and local authorities. Et al, to ensure that we provide a holistic overview of the risks that we face as the myriad of events come to light. Um, both of liaison with our business fire safety partners to ensure that, uh, their concerns are met as well as uh, mitigation and operational response, uh, uh, from a, a threat and risk perspective to ensure, um, that the risk is minimized to those attending those events and the wider public. Um. Obviously, uh, the, our current main focus alongside our con- consistent, uh, the consistent work we undertake for the high profile events such as the, uh, principality stadium events that are ongoing, both rugby, football and, and major sort of significant concerts. Um, the main piece of work on the horizon is the Euro Football Championships in twenty twenty eight. This is very early in this inception of piece of work, um, but we have already started to work with, um, South Wales Police, um, awaiting on a piece of work and timeline. And from then, uh, to start our own planning, sort of with, with any great gusto. Um, having said that, we have already visited, um, Stuttgart back last year in twenty twenty four for their during the period that they undertook the, the management of the, the Euros, so i- in, in Germany in last year. We've, we've liaised and continued to maintain that liaison with Stuttgart Fire Rescue Service to learn the lessons from their planning and, and experiences from that event. And I continue to work with AC of Hadfield, um, who is the organization's strategic lead. Um, moving on to the service wide business con- sorry, um, the operational planning for high risk homicides, apologies. Um, this is a continued piece of work, um, providing regular engagement with local stations and commanders to ensure that the three yearly reviews of those homicide operational tactical plans are as up to date as we can get them. With more regular review and changes undertaken following exercises or incidents as we, as we've seen in recent years. Um, we maintain lia- closely liaison with those, with those partner sites, um, providing training and exercising, um, commitments. Uh, in to ensure the effective incident response, um, and, and, and learning from, from the, any events that have been undertaken. Moving on to service wide business continuity plans. Um, the part the team to seek to ensure the service is prepared for those foreseeable risks, um, across fuel, power shortages, industrial action, fuel, um, flu pandemic or severe weather. And those, those person continuity plans are all up to date. And we seek to exercise twice a year on, across those varied plans, as well as some additional considerations. For example, cyber as we, uh, as we tested strategic leadership team with an unplanned, um, unplanned exercise back in February this year. Um, which we, we found to be very successful, um, with some learning taken from it, um, but found to be, uh, found the service to be quite resilient within its, um, established.
And on cyber, he beat it.
Oh, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, you, you just on cyber, you froze, Peter, which we thought was extremely ironic. And, and, and on that side, and on that cyber thing, can I just say, looking at the service wide business continuity plans, you know, all the kind of the, the stuff you'd expect would be there is there. But cyber is clearly going to be an increasing risk as we move forward. I mean, you know, Marks and Spencer still have, but they're online shopping from, from Easter. And it's having its terrible effects on classified loans because I cannot get to a store in the daytime. But no, seriously, you know, this is a, this is a big risk that we're going to have to face going forward.
Absolutely. We, we continue through the security risk group. We continue to focus on that. Um, obviously it's a quite an IT focused element. Um, but the wider business continuity or business impact assessment, um, around cyber is the coordination we undertake with departments to prioritize those, um, technical infrastructure requirements and systems, uh, the, uh, and sys- IT systems that are required to, to bring the, the the organization back online as quickly as possible. So that's the current work we're undertaking with IT and across, across departmental. Um, so, uh, uh, yeah, so the, the exercise we undertook in a no notice exercise for cyber back in February twenty twenty five was received very well by S L T, was managed very well and proved the organization to, to be, um, so well prepared for such an attack, um, although it is appreciated for the work is ongoing with that. Um, and then lastly, coordination of departmental business, business continuity planning. Um, as I just mentioned, that those business impact assessments through each of the departments, um, thirteen have now been completed across the service. Um, to allow so, to allow departments to prioritize their requirements and the effects of events within their departments on the wider service. Um, in addition to that, the team have now, and the service have now gained professional qualification in business continuity, something we've never had previously to this level. Um, we're providing face to face training to departments, um, at all levels to ensure that business continuity is high on the radar across those departments to, so people recognize the importance of that pre-planning. We're working to provide visibility of, of the business impact assessment and those business continuity plans to the internal syst- to the internal monitoring systems. Um, and delivering service wide training, online training, um, available to all who, 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 uh, who deem necessary. Um, to provide, to increase the profile and integration of business continuity, um, with the department for business, business as usual.
Okay. Thank you very much. Your last report. Comments? Questions? Anyone? Chief?
Uh, thank you very much, Chair. So, um, if, if you look at paragraph two issues, no significant issues to report in this period. Um, I, I just want to extend to the resilience and planning team that this is just your responsibility. Um, it, it's actually a responsibility to every single person to be questioning where are we? Are we good enough? Are we ready to respond? And, uh, and, and I just want to make that very clear in this meeting and in other meetings when we're at E L T and S L T level. Um, but I, I approach everything with a questioning mind. I actually start from it went wrong and work backwards. And I think we need to make sure that we're very clear of that. And cyber is a very good example of that. If we get a cyber attack, we take it down for a long period. And we will not be able to respond to, uh, to the public. If there is a, or a terrorist attack. And, and actually the, the likelihood of that happening is actually pretty high right the way across the country at the moment. We need to be ready to respond. And so everybody in all of their departments needs to be ready to leave inside. So. That's why.
Now we're on high alert. It's, you know, we see those colors all the day, but you know, nothing's going back down to bleeding, everything's moving up. Okay, anything, yes, questions?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just sure what the Chief said about the cyber thing that, as you've mentioned, Andrew Cox, about Marks and Spencer's and Calhoun and those other organizations. Those of us that do any work with the NHS that gets hit thousands of times a day by cyber. And we know that our ICT strategy isn't quite where we would want it in terms of the latest technology and information. So if, if on the one hand, cyber is an IT based issue and we haven't got the latest something, it's about our confidence and resilience of the system to penetration and also in terms of recovery. That's one point. The second point, page one on one. Thanks, Peter. Appreciate all the work you did on this and since we, uh, we discussed this at the pre-meeting. Just a couple of points. On the third bullet point, um, I don't know how many departments we've got, I have a, have the, the, uh, calendar. It says thirteen departments have completed analysis. Is that thirteen departments out of thirteen or thirteen and twenty? It'd be useful to know. So we get an idea of what is the, the level of attainment of this.
Yes.
And also by when that they also expect to be completed. Uh, this is a theme that I think we're constantly wanted to put through all this thing. If you put something in there, we want to know when it's going to be done by.
Yes.
Um, the next point, uh, the resilience team, uh, is going to be, is being developed. I'd like to know by when. You know, because being developed could be forever and a day. I'd like to understand, you know, whether we hit it, is it the end of July, is it this year, whatever? And the same thing would then apply to the penultimate, why the training pack is developed, it will be hosted on the internal staff trading platform when. But just be, these things, if you, if you say something you're going to, to do, I'd like to know, I think we'd like to know.
Yes, did.
When. And if there's a group, when I say it's like thirteen departments, did we hit it fifty percent of the time? Did we hit it a hundred percent? Because a hundred percent of all, all departments done by now will be a good news story. Thanks.
Yes, Carl.
Um, I, I'm going to ask Wayne a question, um, via Peter. So Peter, thanks very much for the report. It's really helpful. Uh, personally, I'd like to see when the testing regime is going to, that, that, that practice testing bit of, and, you know, please check, that would be really interesting. So the, the, the monitoring officer query really is, should we as commissioners be dip sampling some of the business continuity plans? Um, so I have fallen foul of this before, when everybody has got the same business continuity plan, that's all in the same place, which is headquarters when the power goes off. So, and I learned a very salutary lesson because the power did go off and nobody had a, a good plan on the back of it. So I've got burnt on this before. And the question is, isn't it, the reports is the report. But how do we know the plans of where we need to be? So there's a question for monitoring officer on how we would do that. Because I don't think this is the environment to do it. And, and how would we do that through? Is that all right, Wayne? If I could leave you with that question to discuss with Peter, I'm more than happy to take that for the commissioners. But I do think we should dip sell on some of these. And I'm not an expert, but I think we should just have that reasonable.
Very good point.
As a small addition to that, um, we, we've, we've also got another stack. So the, uh, um, the Chief of Staff, he's getting some of these.
Yeah, wonderful. Uh, at the minute, as we speak, and it's a full, uh, sort of training package which is going to be delivered very soon. And we're identifying through the, uh, E L T of all the heads of, uh, departments who will take on their business from new ones and update them, revise them. Once we get to a certain stage, then we, and we've got that assurance, we'll exercise it, but no notice as well. And that includes cyber as well. So that's in that portfolio, which probably, uh, as you speak, I'm on the one risk when it comes to, uh, business continuity.
Brian, yes?
Yeah, Chair, if you, I'll probably take away an action if that's okay, not, not to come back to board commissioners. So it's not like we haven't got anything in place with cybersecurity, because let's dispense that notion, because we could probably get about thirty to forty people trying to penetrate the service on a daily basis and they're not good paid actors. So we have got reasonably robust systems now. All we've got to do is make sure the future proof is heading with the technologies going. So I think I'll take away an action and bring ICT in just to give us a briefing about what security looks like. And what future threats we're going to face that we need to get on the front foot with. But we have got reasonably good systems in place, um, because we get thirty, forty usually a day on average trying to penetrate into the service.
Thank you, Kirsty. Um, I think Brian's question is a very helpful one. I think it would either be wise to do that in committee as in a private session.
Absolutely.
Uh, but, uh, I think it'd be, I think it would be useful to, to know that. That's, yeah.
And give some reassurance as well from my point of view with the, uh, uh, the W L G insight, uh, half the cyber assessment framework. We are actively participating in that. So we do have a lot of cybersecurity experience currently undertaking the self-assessment. Uh, and that's quite useful for peer assessment and peer guidance as well. So I think what about cyber, uh, cybersecurity expertise is a a pivotal part of that group, very longstanding member of staff. So we are, we are, uh, taking a very honest self-assessment against that at the moment and any, and taking actions from that. We will be taking the S L T for, for actual consideration.
That's good to know.
And, and another thing to add very quickly is, uh, we ran a cyber exercise three months ago.
February.
Have you ever read?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Dean.
Thank you, Jay. It's just an observation really, as the, as the lead for resilience of plans. Thanks for meeting, Peter, all together. So thank you very much. Just to put a little bit of a strategic perspective over the paper, I guess, just to give a bit of assurance really. Because I think with, uh, Pete's teams, they are fully embedded into local resilience forums. And there's two that we serve across South Wales. So they engage on a weekly basis in terms of events, planning, everything that goes on across the South Wales region. But from a Welsh government perspective, I sit on what's called the Wales Resilience Planning Team, uh, that's chaired through the Welsh Government. So strategically, we are part of a bigger wider picture across Wales. Uh, receiving intelligence and everything else that goes into the service, giving us that opportunity strategically to feed down into Pete's teams to ensure that look resilience forums, that we are playing a, a, uh, generous part in what goes on across South Wales. But then how we take that information and use it internally for our benefits, make sure that we are playing a pivotal point in, in stakeholder engagement across South Wales. So it's just a given overview that we are embedded from a film perspective, right down to the local elements or stations, uh, and, and everything in between.
That's good to know. Thank you. Kirsty, do you want?
Yeah, if you don't mind, Chair, just picking up really on, on Dean's point there around the local resilience forums. You probably as commissioners, you probably need to be aware that I'm the new chair for South Wales L R F. Uh, I took over from Craig Flannery last month. Um, so just make you aware as commissioners that, um, that I've picked up that role. Um, but I think in that role, what's also been offered from South Wales Police is to provide assurance to our critical incident team. So for example, when we ran the last one in the cyber one in February, um, South Wales Police have offered to come in to be a critical friend. To give us some assurances around how we operate as a critical incident team. So A C C Travis South Wales Police, um, is, is engaged with us and offered that for the next time we do a sit or a critical incident team incident, test that business continuity, to give you two, two assurances as well.
It's good that, you know, the public services are working together. I mean, it's, we're all for that.
Which means action before he retires.
He retires, doesn't that say?
Always at work, aren't we?
Well.
Okay. Anything further on this? Um, thank you. Uh, thank you very much, Peter. That engaged a lot of people and lots of good outcomes and discussion on it. So moving on to the.
Thank you for your comments. Um, Chair, could I, could I just be excused? I have got prior, another commitment to move on to if that, if that's suitable with yourself.
Yeah, absolutely, totally. So, yeah, Chris.
Thank you very much indeed.
Um, eight point four annual update of the People Committee over to Alison. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So this report sets out, um, the activity considered by the People Committee in the twenty twenty four, twenty five financial year. Um, the report is for information and assurance and contains an appendix which sets out, uh, the activity considered by the People Committee over the financial year. Just to kind of brigade some of the activity, because I'm conscious it's a list of reports. Um, the reports can be split into assurance reports.
Yeah.
So where we've brought data analysis to the committee so that members can see whether there's improvements or, um, uh, uh, trends that we need to look into and, um, address. It also contains reports that shape activity. So the ideas around things like pre, um, recruitment governance, um, talent management. And it also contains statutory reports that we are required to publish. So for example, the gender pay gap report and the pay policy statement. Um. We've included hyperlinks to each of the meetings at the top of the appendix. So, um, public and, uh, committee members can dip in and have a look at the reports within those meetings. And but happy to take any questions. I've tried to provide a summary under each of the report head, headlines. Um, but happy to take any questions on the reports itself.
Thank you. Did you join for a minute?
No.
Kirsty?
Kirsty. Can I just make a general point on the next couple of items on the annual reports around the committee? And I guess, Wayne, this is like a discussion of, it feels kind of weird that the executive officer would present that report as opposed to the chair of the committee. So I'm just wondering in, on reflection, really, no, 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 no. It's not, no, not Alison Young's stuff, but because the way it's written, isn't it, that makes you all a thought. Actually, it shouldn't be all a thought. Actually, it's, it, it belongs to the company. So I'm just thinking, like, if, for all of them in future years, whether the annual reports are written by Reedwood and presented by the Chair of the Committee. Uh, and then I'm just also wondering, Wayne, about whether we operate a uh, a committee effectiveness, uh, review. So, uh, you would expect on an annual basis that everybody that attends the committee, both executives, uh, as well as, you know, uh, commissioners or in the future Fire Authority members would have an opportunity to reflect on whether the committee had been effective, whether, you know, is the right people around the table, whether the papers are of good quality, whether timely decisions are able to be made, whether the behaviors in the committee are ones that are, you know, supportive and challenging, but not toxic. So I'm just wondering whether we could incorporate a program of committee effectiveness work, annual basis, uh, questionnaire. And then. A questionnaire and then gives everyone an opportunity to to reflect on whether that committee is operating in the way that you would want to operate it. Yes, sounds that's a really good idea, really good idea. And something to take up with the new monitoring officer, I guess. Yeah, yeah, yeah. A pivotal role there. But on the on the actual substance of the report itself, no, it's great. But actually, the report is fine. What what you raised, you know, because so naturally, I went to pitch firstly, then say, you know, what, do you know what I mean? Because that's that's how we used to work it, that's how we usually would work. But the report is fine. Yeah, yeah. Anything for us on the report, please? No, there we go. So we note the work of the People Committee as well. Thank you. And again, moving on to the annual report of the Finance and Audit Committee. Yeah, Wayne, Wayne, yeah, it's me. So everything's fine. But I know so Wayne is presenting this in Lisa's absence, but I'll differ in Sarah in again, because this will be your area going forward. Yeah?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I was looking at what's been happening, the timeline. Yes, very interesting. But it will be mine, yes.
Yes, okay. So that's two jobs we're going to need from the meeting. Good. Wayne, is there anything we please people to attend to?
No, no, not at all. I think it's very similar to obviously what Alison presented there in terms of what the committee is.
Yeah.
In terms of reference of each committee, it talks about an annual update being a standard part of governance. And like any talks, I think, can make you know, five times last year, which is probably and the set out, and it just goes through the papers like Alison's did. I think in terms of the presenting dozen, I think in terms of the the new governance structure we have ourselves, obviously. Not only the committee, he's presenting to a chair, whereas this committee here, obviously, the chair is the chair of the committee. Yeah, so he said that on board, I think.
It's it's kind of how the rest of the world works. Yeah, and and that's why we find it so natural. I mean, you know, my only comment would be to to thank Lisa for the preparation and the oversight of this. I'd like to thank her publicly and for the work she undertook as insurance treasurer while also undertaking the work of this type of finance. So it was a, you know, a quite a workload for her. So I'd like to record our thanks and appreciation for that that work being undertaken. And yes.
Query, Chair, I'm kind of think about it, but we 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 I'm just very aware of how time is moving through. And obviously, we have a very strong opportunity around the midterm potential planning.
Yeah.
What needs to be done. We're now into June. I'm I'm not aware, and you might personally be at the committee, how far that has progressed around that future forward thinking midterm.
Okay, so we've got a meeting in the diary for July the fourth, as I mentioned previously, and that's really where I would be looking at. And we're bringing it to the committee, finance committee in September.
Thank you, Chair. It's really pretty.
Okay, so we note that report and move on to the last in this series. The change transformation culture committee. Dominic, you, thank you.
I'd like to send this part of my whole chair of the change transformation committee. Again, this is an annual update. This is a new board that we implemented as part of our governance framework improvement. The first board was held on the twenty first of February. This board gives us scrutiny on our service improvement boards, which are also new as part of our improvement journey. Currently, they are in two parts, given the substantial nature of the change that we have there being so service improvement board, thematics and service improvement board culture, which includes recommendations, from the financial review, transformation, whatever strategy and improvement, as we develop our improvement journey. One that would bring through our annual improvement plan. And that board covers all of the highlights that the chief has borne covered in his brief, so I won't dip into any of those any further. There's been two meetings and the papers are kept in there as Alex is, they're called details of the second meeting. It's held on the sixteenth of May, which was the same day as the pre-meeting after this board. So we concluded the detail in the paper, but unfortunately weren't weren't able to cover it in detail within the itself. So that is the annual strategic and transformation culture.
Dominic, any comments, questions, Kirsty?
I'd just say it had the gestation period of an elephant, it felt like, but we got there and twenty years I've been running. And I think in the two meetings that we've had, it has proven a really useful forum to have some constructive challenge around the delivery. So I'm really grateful to everybody that contributes to that that meeting. And I think the two meetings that started that, I think I've gone one.
Good. These years. Anything further on this? No? Okay, in that case, we know the work undertaken by the change transformation and culture committee. And moving on to eight point seven, automatic fire alarms. Mike, please.
Thank you, Chair. Can I have a little? The recommendation is commissioners note this report to provide an update on progress. As you know, response strategy to automatic fire alarms changed on the sixth of January. This response model, which we refined during our engagement and consultation phase, ensures emergency responses mobilized twenty four seven to all residential premises, including specialised houses such as sheltered accommodation, extra care facilities, schools, educational facilities, heritage sites. Our webpage is still live and continues to provide information and guidance while still allowing stakeholders to raise questions. The go live date for N H S premises was the seventh of April. This three month delay was agreed to allow sufficient time for these premises to revise policies and review the response strategies. There is an exemption process. So this allows premises with the opportunity to, outside of the scope of the strategy, to apply for an exemption. The granting of the exemption ensures that an emergency response is maintained. Our exemption process utilizes the National Fire Chiefs Council guidance that determine whether or not an exemption should be granted. We've used the six categories of risk, expanded on each category and applied a scoring system. Evaluation and conclusion, from the sixth of January to the twenty ninth of April, we've attended one thousand one hundred and forty eight incidents compared with one thousand nine hundred and seventeen incidents during the same period in twenty twenty four. This is an overall reduction, seven hundred and sixty nine calls or forty percent. We have further reductions anticipated following the go live dates of the N H S premises on the seventh of April. To date, we've received fourteen exemption requests, eleven of which have been granted and three have been declined. Appendix one contains a full breakdown of those premises. Next steps, we'll continue to monitor, review the A F As within service and react swiftly to any identified trends. We continue to engage with the stakeholders and we respond to requests and we receive them. That is my update.
Yeah. Please.
Thank you for this update. And there's a lot of work from, I see.
I can appreciate.
The reports you're bringing. I was interested in the the exemptions. They primarily, they come from N H S.
Yeah.
Yes. And the granting or not granting, none of them have not been granted because they've got a response team. So it's a sort of, first one, if they spend money on having people there, we don't complain. If they want to save money and don't have people there, we will attend. So there's a danger there, isn't there, that we they can cut back resources and we're going to have a deficit? Is there an issue about their responsibility is to help those people in those teams, people to deal with that?
I think with the business by safety, we've got an in-depth knowledge of each hospital premise, premises. We know what facilities they have, so we know whether they've got spring systems, we know their evacuation strategies. We know the makeup of the buildings. We know it's a number of factors. One one other factor is a fire response team, but it's not the only factor. It's down to the staffing as well, what the staff levels like on that. What type of patients are you looking after? Some of these hospitals are looking after some patients, but it's sample on limited resources in the evening. So we know that they're going to need that extra help or support, shouldn't they, if they can? So we're taking into account a lot of factors, but just not relying on that one factor.
Okay, great. Local knowledge is crucial in this.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. Anything else?
I I thought the paper might, the worst continues to kind of develop to grow. I suppose it's when it becomes B A U really, and and when that doesn't potentially feel like we're at that tipping point at the moment with the N H S going live in April, but don't you think that's just?
I think we've probably got to maintain this for twelve months. I think I'm still expecting figures to fluctuate. And that is working with both control, working with the alarm receiving centres, identifying any spikes, which nationally, there's been spikes. So there will be reduction, but all of a sudden they'll start creeping up. But I think to maintain momentum and make sure that we're achieving our reduction, which we set out to achieve, we need to continually monitor. Certainly for the next twelve months and then start to think about a reduction as a B A U.
Because the Welsh Government advisory would say that I've given it a drop, but then they will go back up.
Yeah, I would expect that.
He noted that previously. Yes, Dean.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And thanks, Mike, for the for the update as well. But I guess it's from an operations perspective, just give you a little bit of assurance again, I guess. In terms of forty percent reduction in calls to automatic fire alarms, first in operations, that means that we try to efficiency. It means how do we then use adequately use and appropriately use that capacity? So it's helping us support the third degree, particularly around the border and all the firefighting Wales, where we talk around operation reset. So we utilise this time to give us the capacity to increase risk reduction activities. So we provide in more home by safety checks for the communities across South Wales. But then we rely that time, this capacity to undertake additional training to ensure that we've we've given the right time to our operational crews for that training that's required to maintain the commonalities over a period of time. So this is this piece of work is is consequently giving us a better response to the communities out there. So it's welcome by, you know, by us in operation.
Anything, anyone else, please? Kirsty, yeah. I think the successful implementation of this policy from what I perceived of a policy which was no, going to change, we're going to carry on doing exactly what we've always done, even in this case of lots of recommendations to change. I think what, you know, we could take a lot of lessons from this, can't we, around confidence in the organisation to deliver change? We can, you know, we can deliver change. We've done it successfully here. We've done it in a way that does not cause anybody to be outside of their platforms or any negative publicity, for what is a substantial change. And I just wanted to, you know, commend the way that we've done it, because we have done it in consultation with our partners, whether that being our constituent local authorities, you know, with key stakeholders. We have demonstrated that we're a listening organisation because our policy changes as a result of that intervention. Yeah. And I just think this is an example really of how policy, how how change management process can happen within the organisation.
In less than six months.
Yeah, well, I think it's a bit longer than that. It's a bit longer, but the fact is, it can happen, can't it? We can do hard things. Yeah. We can do bad things. Yeah, with with positive outcomes.
And just like, I mean, I've I've seen the scroll that particular organisations be really a step forward. And I guess, you know, lots of we were able to have the confidence of other organisations to other organisations learning. The challenge for us will come at some point in the future when we're the first to do something. And hopefully, this is part of the building blocks to give us confidence to be able to do these change things and then accept that change can be just part of the norm that we do, the way we do business.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. Change management is a it's a continuous continuous process. So we recommend that the commissioners note the report as providing updates on progress. Thank you very much. Okay, eight point eight annual audit plan, audit Wales, so waiting meetings after then we go to Julie or?
Yeah, I'll I'll introduce the paper and then I'll pass over to Julie.
Okay.
Anything to add? So this one is
Thank you.
relatively straightforward paper. It's just that the commissioners will do the kind of did plan divided by all these rules. So the report just presents the draft audit plan issued by Audit Wales. We have a full time main fee structure on this patchy annual audit to be undertaken at twenty five, twenty six, final through year. The recommendation that our commissioners know of the content of the draft audit plan and some of the only comments proposed that the head finance procurement and property will be authorized to find the final feedback from Audit Wales and be the final version of the audit plan. So and any except signature, you know, people. Lisa will be the one then who is in contact with Audit Wales.
Yes.
And just the paper by delivering about a little bit then of the general that role, quite broadly, the financial status, the authority, the set plan, who has made proper arrangements to apply for money in the use of its resources. And in summary, the plan covers, there'll be an audit of the financial statements. There'll be performance audit work and other books on the financial sustainability and compliance of the Wellbeing Future Generations Wales Act. It was all driven into the audit timetable for the year. Yes, there'll be the offices and most of our governance. I provides then the audit fee as it currently stands. Like I said, hopefully, it's a relatively straightforward of the plan and that. I probably asked for any further comments.
Julie, please, so to you.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Well, Lisa's covering report, I think, probably covers most of most of the most of the plan. So I haven't got much more to add, but I just I'll just take you through the the points, the key points briefly. I'm already already in the cover report. So this summarises our planned financial audit accounts, performance audit work for the forthcoming year. So it includes our key responsibilities. So they're outlined throughout the document, so I won't repeat them, but just to inform you, there's no changes from from prior year. Our responsibilities are pretty much, pretty much the same. So as you know, we follow a risk-based approach to direct focus of our work. So in terms of the financial audit, we've got the risk of management override, which is standard risk management override controls, which is a standard risk we apply across all audit audit bodies. So we apply a a specific programme of work to that. And in terms of specific risks, you'll probably be familiar with some of these from prior years, but we've got pension liability and land and buildings valuations, both because they involve a degree of estimation, so it increases the risks for the the financial statements and susceptible to to market conditions. And also this year, I won't go through this in any detail unless you want me to. There's a new accounting standard on leases, which changes the the lease accounting for financial statements, which is, I think, the finance team, I'm sure Lisa would would talk about this. It's involved a significant amount of work on their side to to adopt that. So we'll be focusing some some testing on that this year. Senior officer remuneration, commissions allowance is sensitive by nature and obviously a lot of changes at the senior team this year to reflect in in the remuneration notes. We'll be looking at that. And obviously related parties. So our detailed audit table is included in in the plan. Sometimes financial audit runs from our planning work from February through the final counter process. Formal deadline for the audit of general opinion is the end of October. But we've discussed with the finance team to try and bring that audit time scale a lot earlier. So we'll be hoping to do the fieldwork June, July, in terms of that, which is significantly earlier than last year. And in terms of our performance audit work, obviously, my performance colleagues aren't here today, but it's a review of financial sustainability is the key piece of planned work there. Our audit fee, a small increase compared to the final year, to to last year, sorry. And in terms of the audit team, just to reaffirm that we are independent, we can confirm independence of ourselves, which we have to do. So happy to take any questions on any of that.
No, thank you, Julie. That was a that was a very clear trot through of its business as usual, you know. Those of us involved in the public life in Wales know your organisation very well. And, you know, are grateful that we do have that separation of powers so that it keeps everything clear, legal, transparent and decent and good value to the taxpayer. So just just on the recommendations, can I just note, because I need to give more work to Sarah, because I only give her two things. So it says four point two, the way it's proposed that the head finance be authorized to provide final feedback to Audit Wales. So is that Lisa or does? uh be authorized to provide final feedback to Audit Wales. So is that Lisa or does Sarah get involved as well?
Uh it would likely be Sarah. It's something we haven't probably discussed, and Sarah started with us uh last week, you think it was?
This week.
Oh, this week.
This week, yeah.
The wrong week. So I think when the paper was drafted, it was, I don't let me look at that form, but I start, it's probably as likely that it will be Sarah, if that's okay?
Yes, yes.
Yes, since that's three things you've got to complete. Brilliant. Okay, um Julie, thank you so much. That's very clear. Is there any further need to let us know?
Okay. Nothing, nothing from our our side, but um just thanks for allowing us to join you. Nice to see you all.
No, no, it's it's, you're always very welcome. Um anything from anyone else, please, before I close this item? Thank you. Note the content then, and draw draft audit plan, and we move on to the forward work. On page one seventy seven. So there's loads here, taking us through to next year, I believe. Um so I don't intend to go through every point, but I will just ask if anyone's got any questions or issues on any of the forward work programme. So we've done June, so anything on July or September, October, December and February? And who knows, we'll only be by February twenty twenty six. Oh, and March, yeah, March. So anything from anyone on this, please, other than here it is, for us all to enjoy? No?
I knew you'd say so. Sorry.
So sorry.
Oh, no, I just, I mean, I mean, the plan is is fine, as it's currently set out. I think, you know, the caveat we always need to have is that we have that flexibility in the system, don't we? To be able to respond to any uh potential unforeseen issues at the stage, so just making that
very obvious point. No, it's a very, very valid point. It's a valuable point. Thank you very much. Um and and a further point that I'll make is that these dates are now set in stone. Obviously, um, you know, picking up on Kirsty's point, emergencies and so on and so forth happen. But, you know, our expectation would be that these meetings are fully staffed by us and senior team because the dates are here, um and there shouldn't be any dissension from that. Okay? Thank you very much. Um final point, any items of fitness that uh is due by the Chair? I have nothing. So I would like to thank you all very much, John, well and Doran, well. Thank you very much for having us on here. And uh the meeting is closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.